Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sansa, Jim Jones with Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Erica Neely, and she's a candidate for Clark County School Board District F. But before we get to Erica, Jim, you ever do?
No, actually, not really. I just, I'm just looking forward to Clark County School, the Clark County School District is in such disarray, I'm just looking forward to this interview because I have a lot of questions.
Clark County School District is highly political now.
Yeah.
You know what it is, Jim? This is what it is. Because back in the day, parents just dropped their kids off, school, whatever. Now, with this virtual learning and they got the laptop, parents are like, wait, this is what? What the hell? What the hell? They teaching my kid? No, 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 no. Get off of that. Get off of that. Go over there. Go to your room. I'm gonna call this teacher.
And that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, it's interesting because before, like, we used to interview people that were running for the school district trustee all the time. And we'd show up every once in a while, and there'd be three people. Now, all of a sudden, the room is packed. Parents are standing up saying, no, you're not my boss. I'm your boss. I'm like...
Cops are outside.
I'm like, so this is what it took, a damn pandemic for parents to actually start catching on to this stuff.
Yeah, and now parents are getting involved and running for school boards and all that stuff. So that's good.
So, yeah, it's kind of one of those things where, like, my mom always said, when life gives you lemons, make lemonade.
Right. So, Ms. Neely?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about you.
Well, how far back do you want me to go with this?
I'm very...
I was born in California, Southern California, South Central, actually.
Wow. You know Snoop Dogg?
No, I do not know him, yes. But I used to, you know? To his music, you know? So, my father is from Mexico, and my mother's from...
What part?
Ah, Michoacan, Langostura, Michoacan.
Okay.
Sí.
Any, is it close to Leon Guadaluara?
No.
No?
No. So, Michoacan is southwest of Mexico, and my mother is from El Salvador.
Ah.
And they met in California.
Cool.
So, I am an anchor baby.
What exactly is that?
So, they came here illegally.
Oh, okay.
They are now legal.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to send you back.
We're gonna, oh, don't call immigration, please.
Where should we send you? Mexico or El Salvador?
Well, I was born and raised in California, Southern California. And so, I am one of six. Same mom, same dad. No, no, different daddies.
No milkman.
No, no milkman. So, and my parents are still together. So, I'm 42, so they've been together, I wanna say 46 years, something like that.
And you got older siblings, right?
That's correct. That's correct. So, I'm the middle of six, so two older and three under.
Okay.
Yes. So then, I moved to Las Vegas, right when the real estate market was a boom. So, I bought a condo here.
So, that wasn't in '07 and '08 because it dropped. So, what year did you come?
I came here in '05, 2005.
And then it dipped in '07 and '08.
Oh, it hit me in '09.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I couldn't just, I couldn't stay afloat. So, that was like the first kind of putting my toes in politics because the policies were affecting me. Like, for example, they bailed out the cars, but a lot of people lost their homes. They didn't just lose their homes, they lost their credit, their money, and so...
Their dignity.
Exactly.
Some people committed suicide.
Yeah, that was the whole big two, too big to fail fiasco.
Too big to fail.
Yeah.
Yes, so, anyways, then I met my husband.
Okay.
I met my in '09 when I lost my home, but I gained a husband. Lawrence Neely.
Okay.
Yes, and together we have six kids. He's wonderful.
Okay.
Yes, we've been together 14 years.
Six kids?
Six kids.
Are you Mormon?
I am Catholic.
Okay.
Yes.
Same thing.
Same thing.
I know I'm gonna get a lot of God stuff for that. And folks, the reason why, the reason why I say Mormon is because usually at five kids, Mormons usually have five kids.
Well, I have to, you know, I have to do say this. I gave birth to four.
Okay.
So, when I met my husband, he had a daughter. So, I have a stepdaughter, and I gave birth to four, so that's five. And we've always wanted to adopt. So, I'm also a foster care licensed.
Oh, wow.
And so, I adopted my sixth child. So, I gave birth to four. I don't know if that still counts. So, I have a stepdaughter and an adopted daughter, and we love her so much.
Hey, you got six kids.
I have six kids, yes. No regrets here.
Okay.
Yes.
High food bill you have at your house.
Ah, we do, yes. A lot of milk. A lot of milk, yes.
So, Ms. Neely, you're running for Clark County School Board District F.
I am.
Where is F?
So, it's south of Sahara, I-15 west. So, you cover Mountains Edge, Rhodes Ranch, Jean's, Good Springs.
What qualifies you to run for school board?
Actually, I could try to win you with my resume, small business owner. I tutor for Classical Conversations.
You do math tutoring?
I do math tutoring to some extent.
You come over and help my 13-year-old?
I would love to. I would love to. Excel, timetable, division.
For real?
Absolutely. Why not? All kids, knowledge is power.
Okay. And so... I told you, she's a smart lady. I've done my research on you.
So, but I think what really qualifies, we need parents at the table.
Believe me, they're coming.
I'm not, I'm not running as, you know, we have people running as, I'm a lawyer, or I'm a judge, I'm a doctor, and all these professionals, but the bottom line is...
If I'm a dentist.
But at the end of the day, no one cares more than the parents, and we need parents at the table.
Yeah.
We also need professionals, but we also need a parent at the table.
Why would you wanna put your, you see what's going on?
I do.
School board trustees tell me that they've been getting death threats. Their home got protest, protesters are outside their house. Why you wanna do this?
Listen, with my six kids...
Oh, you got backup?
With my six kids, they're not, they're not an excuse. They're my reason. So, when I first entered the public school system, they were not teaching reading. So, then I moved them, yeah, the sight words. Sight words is horrible. And so, I moved them to a charter school. And so, I don't know if you know that when you go into a charter school, you put your name in, it's a lottery, and we won the lottery.
Bingo.
Bingo, we won the lottery. So, and charter schools keep their high stars. And one of the reasons I know how they keep their high stars is they don't report the incidents reports when it comes to violence. There is violence at the schools. So, my daughter was punched in the nose, ganged up by a group of bullies. Yes, second grade.
Second grade?
Second grade.
What school is this?
Doral Red Rock.
At a charter school?
At a charter school, yes. And the principal knows me really well, so we could say hi to Dr. Hammack. So, and I know she, anyways, I'm not even gonna comment on that. So, we had to pull her out. So, now, public schools are not teaching reading. Charter schools are hiding violence in the school system. So, my next option is private school. I can't afford private school, so I started homeschooling. So, but to answer your question...
Or you go and tell them to bring the ESAs back.
ESAs. So, what we ended up doing, my husband and I, what we ended up doing is homeschooling our children. And they're trying to pass now laws that, that they're trying to pass curriculum in this, in your home. So, that's where I draw the line. For my husband to take the burden of the financial, to care for us, and educator, not a lot of people could do that. So, I wanna give back to the community. I wanna serve the children, not just my children, because I would like my kids to return back to public school. But right now, we're 49th in the nation. And so, I, I don't know why else, why should we not be rising up? That is more than reasons, 49 reasons.
So, what do you think about this virtual learning?
I disagree. I disagree. Sitting a child, like, for example, my child had to sit in front of the computer, and she wasn't allowed to get up. She would raise her hand, I need to go potty, I need to go potty. How do you do that to a child? Just sit there in front of a screen?
Really?
Yes.
They wouldn't allow her to go to the restroom?
Well, yes and no. For example, it's like, kids are getting up out of the computer.
Right.
So, they're not even paying attention, and they're asking parents, hey, they need to sit there, we need to count their time. A five and six-year-old should not be sitting in front of a screen. They should be in front of a book. I mean, that's where we learn.
So, like, this is something that perplexes me. And so, how do we come up with Nevada being ranked 49th? Because I pulled up so much data over the last two months, and it says, for quality, we're 36, safety, we're 46th. So, where does the 49 come in?
So, they take a lot of factors, and instead of...
There's five specific, right?
Yes.
So, what are the five?
So, the reading...
If you don't know them off the top of your head, that's fine.
I'm still rich, but I know that reading and math is big. So, 26% of our kids are proficiency. And there's also a report that also came out, the best 1,000 schools in the nation. And think about this, the best 1,000 schools in the nation. California has over 115, Texas has over 117 or 18. In Nevada, not Clark County, in Nevada, there's only four. So, you take those numbers about reading, writing, and also, I can't think of the word. I have to finish that statement.
No, no, you're fine. Like I said, I understand the position here, and so, it wasn't a gotcha question. But there's, there's five different categories, and but what, as a school board trustee, let's, let's get off the categories for a minute. One of the things about the current school board that frustrates me is that it's a, it's a bickering contest, though.
Yes.
So, when you're elected, how will you be able to work with somebody that you don't necessarily agree with, but to get certain things done rather than just arguing? Because the person you're trying to replace is someone who made a very embarrassing statement.
Yes.
And it's somebody that I know really well. I'm not saying I agree with her politics, but for your opponent, or the person currently in your seat, to say, you know, there shouldn't be a dick measuring contest at a school board meeting?
Well, they forget who they work for.
I mean, come on.
Okay. I think I get the mic.
But I mean, literally, but no, the incumbent said that, though.
Yes.
Forward said that.
So, we forget who we work for. And the problem here is, we're working, we're supposed to be serving the children, right? Educating our children, and no one's doing that. And that's the problem. Like you said, the board comes up there, and they're fighting against each other. And then, the kids are the ones in the crossfire. They didn't vote for none of this.
Right, that's true.
They don't get to say anything. They put a mask on them, and the end, right? We'll do as we, as we please.
Speaking of this mask mandate that we have in the school system, are you for or against it? And should kids breathe in all their carbon dioxide? Because that, that's exactly what they're doing. The human body, I mean, everybody wants to go and check the science. The human body gives off carbon dioxide, which comes out of your car, right? It's probably a different type, but, okay?
We're looking for the ones with the cows and flowers.
And trees gives off oxygen, right? I learned that. So, if you, if you breathe in your own waste, because that's what it is...
It is.
For eight hours, six hours, sitting in class, how is that...
Healthy?
Healthy for the kids.
It's not healthy. There's studies that show that, so you have your red blood cells, and so, when you're not bringing in oxygen, you're not developing those red blood cells.
And the mind is still growing for young people.
So, it's not healthy. However, it's still a debate. Some parents are for it, some parents are not. At the end of the day, the school is for reading, writing, and math. They're not pediatricians. So, they shouldn't be putting medical advice on our children. That's up to the parent and the doctor. So, that's where I stand. Everybody should be respected, and we should do that. Respect everyone. Should we mandate it? Absolutely not. I have children of my own, and I love the earth. I love trees, and I love the oxygen. And so, that's where I stand.
You know, I have a 13-year-old, and she was in private school, and then I put her in public school because to get the ESAs, you had to do a certain amount of days in public school. And then, when I'd had her in public school, then the ACLU, was it ACLU, killed the ESA bill. So, I just, I just, you know, I had her in public school, and then I moved her to charter school. And every morning, I tried to get her up to go to school. It's, it's like a challenge. And I'm like, why don't you wanna go? She goes, Dad, it's too early. I'm like, okay, and what else? She goes, Dad, you know, I just don't wanna go to school anymore because they're not teaching what they need to teach. I'm like...
And they're teaching real life stuff?
What are they supposed to teach?
That's awesome.
She goes, well, they're, they're not teaching me anything about banking. They're not teaching me anything about money. They're not teaching me anything about investing money. I mean, she's like, well, these are the things that we need to survive, right? This is how we got this house. This is how we, we buy things. We need to learn about money. I said, how, how, they're not teaching anything about money. They're not teaching what we need to, to go about our daily lives as productive people. They're teaching us crap. And then, the kids are in charge of the classroom because the kids are all noisy, and, and the teachers don't wanna do anything to a kid because the teacher doesn't wanna upset the kid because of parents, or because they might get fired because of administrative, because you know how that politics works in school. She goes, I'm not learning the doggone thing at school. So, I had to pull her out. And I pulled her out on Monday and put her into homeschooling. And, and now she's at home doing the homeschooling, but then, she sacrificed in socializing, right? But then, I did bring that up to her about socializing, and she goes, Dad, the kids in the school, they fight all the time, and, and, and you can't socialize when you got this mask on your face. How you gonna socialize? And, and so, so she's telling me all of this, and I'm like, this is in middle school, right? Right? And this is charter school where you think that, that they're supposed to be better than the public school, which I'm starting to realize they're really not, you know? When she was going to a private school, like, it was Lamb of God, although they teach 45 minutes of religion, that was it. And but ACLU made a big deal about it. You can't put kids in a religious school.
Well, that's debatable.
It is. But, but she was getting, she was getting homework. She, she was, she was learning. And, and this was pre-K and K that she was doing all of this, and I could remember when it, when it was going on. But the, the, these schools that they have now in Clark County, or just the academic side of the house, is just deteriorating big time. And how are you, as a, as a, as a school board trustee, going to tackle that problem?
So, I'm glad you asked this question. And so, back in the 90s, we were second in the nation.
Really?
Yes. We were second in the nation.
That's probably when we had 500,000 people, or less.
But the good thing is, we have the roadmap. We have the roadmap of policies and procedures that actually work. And we also have the roadmap right now of the things that are not working. Number one, we need to reverse and clean up. And we need to go back to a time where things were working, policies and procedures and curriculum. So, that's what I would thrive for. With the same power that they have right now that they're ruining the school board, that same power can be reversed. So, that's my stand.
Well, if, if you do manage to become a school board trustee, whoever wrote the contract for superintendent, they need to fire that person big time. They need to find somebody else to write the contract because you can't, I mean, it, it should be the discretion of the school board to get rid of a superintendent.
Absolutely.
And, and what you mean, we're gonna pay you until the end of your contract?
Exactly, no.
What is that? And then bring, and then after, after you get rid of the guy, you rescind it and bring him back? I mean, that's stupid. That means you're just, you're just, you just don't know what the hell is going on. That, I'm telling, when I look at that school board, I'm saying, they don't know what they are doing.
And they don't care. No, they don't care.
They broke open meeting laws, and that's why they knew they were gonna get sued, so they pulled it back. I got one, one question for you. So, I'm against government mandates, too. But I, I made this comment, it was probably a couple of weeks ago, or I mean, a couple of months ago, sorry, that I'm against government mandates, but seeing how out of control the school board is, and I wouldn't mandate it through the government. I still wouldn't do that. But I don't understand why, I, I think honestly, one of the qualifications to be a school board trustee, period, should be, number one, you have had to at least had one child in the public school system. At some point, even if they're not now, that's fine, because I believe in freedom of choice, and I'm a huge ASA proponent. I always have been. But then also, teaching experience, like, at least a year of teaching experience. And the reason why I say that is because it's very easy to, I think the teachers are getting the brunt of this, and I think it's very easy for people that never actually had to be a teacher in the public school system to blame teachers.
Correct. I agree with you to a certain extent.
Okay.
Teachers are amazing. One teacher, 28 students, and the way they corral them, I mean, with a IELTS at home, they do amazing. The kids love their teachers. Teachers are amazing. However, I still feel parents need to be supporting teachers. Teachers are supposed to be supporting parents. And we're gonna have a unified, successful education, and our kids will thrive from that. It's like a marriage. If mom and dad doesn't get along, the kids suffer. So, we have teachers and parents that need to work together.
Well, I just wanna say this. I've met you on several occasions now, and I really enjoy your passion and your knowledge, and, you know, we just need more people that are willing to put themselves out there like you. And I've been, I've been very impressed with you.
Thank you so much. And there's a lot of parents that I've talked to, and sometimes, they just don't know where to go. They think that stopping at the principal's office is enough. So, we need to do more.
You know, you can actually, I'm glad you brought that up because one of the things that was eye-opening to me, I believe it was about three years ago, is I had, I have a friend that's a school teacher, and she invited me into just her class because we had, a week before we had gotten into this big education debate. And she goes, do me a favor, Jim. I'll clear it with my principal. You come in, observe my classroom just for one hour, and just observe, and see what, see what it's like. It was very eye-opening. It was pretty much, and this was a third-grade classroom. She was pretty much just a babysitter.
Yes.
She did the best she could, but literally, there was not a lot of learning going on there. It was more like, I mean, literally, like, just trying to get the kids to settle down, sit in their seats.
So, I agree with you there. So, a lot of our kids are emotionally distressed, and teachers are stressed. They have not the support. But we need to raise the standard. Currently, there's a teacher in a charter school that has her mom sitting there, supporting her to her job. How do you feel about that?
Yeah.
I'm not making this up. There's a teacher at a charter school that cannot handle the workload of the students. So, her mom comes in and supports her. Yes. And so, then we have someone at the school board that brings her dog for emotional support. I mean, this is the people that are raising our children. And then, another, another thing, this is where I stand. I'm pro-life. That matters. There was 20 suicides in 2020. There was 18 suicides in 2021. That's 48 kids. If you have someone at the school board that is pro-choice, that's willing to sacrifice one life, why are they handling 300,000 lives? I'm, one life is too many. I'm not willing to sacrifice, not one. So, that also matters.
What, what do you think the trustees should do about, or the school district should do about? Because when the epidemic started in 20, they, they were saying like 70,000 kids, that was unaccounted for. How do you think that they can make sure that doesn't happen anymore?
Well, right now, I don't think they have any right to question what parents do. They are ranking 49th in the nation. If I wanna homeschool my child and pull him out of school...
No, I'm not talking about they pulling kids out of school. I'm talking about kids that are on the rocks, on the roster, to go to school, but they don't know where they are.
He's talking about like couch surfing, basically.
They don't know where they are, and 70,000 kids out of the 300 and whatever thousand that they have in the school system, they don't, in the Clark County School District, they, they couldn't find them to give them the virtual learning while the epidemic was still going on. So, as a school board trustee, what, what, what do you think that they need, they need to put in place to make sure that doesn't repeat itself?
Oh, I see. That's one that I would have to think about, you know? I haven't been asked that question, so I apologize for lacking information.
No worries. What do you think about the vaccine mandates among teachers and staff and...
Again, the school is not pediatrician, is not a doctor, it's not a doctor's office. I think it's completely wrong. It should be my body, my choice, with my doctor. That's where I stand.
It's kinda like, and thank you for that, because I kinda have the same stance on sex education.
Oh, that's child abuse.
That, that should be up to the parents.
Completely. A stranger talking to your 13-year-old about sex is child abuse, pedophile. And then, every year, there's always a bus driver that's sexually molesting a child in Clark County. It happens way too many, too many times.
Over the course of the years, when I, when we interviewing trustee candidates, I, I've, I've always said that...
I've seen those interviews. You know which one I'm talking about.
I've always said that the transportation aspect and the cafeteria, feeding the kids aspect, shouldn't be left to the Clark County School Board. It should be, it should be privately set, privately farmed out to different sectors to handle the transportation of kids and to handle the feeding of kids, because I think that they putting too much on their plate. Their job is to educate the kids.
Educate, yes.
So, if they're too busy worried about, hey, I'm gonna pick Johnny up from, from his house to get to the school, or are you gonna eat that baloney sandwich? You're not educating your kid, you know?
So, they have that one responsibility, educate our children. $5 billion, and they're bottom 49.
I'm gonna tell you what Miriam Gibson told me. She's the host of a talk show, A Village Voice, and she was on last week. She goes, where's the weed money? Because the marijuana money is supposed to, the way the, the way the recreational marijuana bill was presented to the public is that if you vote yes on recreational marijuana, these taxes that we're gonna get from all these dispensaries, we're gonna use them for a teacher's education, for teacher's salary, blah, blah, blah. It hasn't happened. So, as a trustee, are you gonna go in there and say, hey, where's the weed money?
I'm not just gonna go in there and say it. I will talk to the commissioner. I want investigation.
There you go.
Where is the assembly?
Who we gonna sue?
Who is?
That's what we need to know. Who we gonna sue?
Yeah, accountability and transparency. I know it's two words, but they go together. They go together.
They do.
Where is the money?
That's why I asked Bob Beers, and like, he, he gave me a very detailed answer because Bob understands how all that stuff works. But that's why honestly, if I were, and I'm not, let's not start rumors. If I was to run for the assembly, one of the first things that I would push for as a legislator is to figure out what we can do about the general fund. Like, either just eliminate the general fund so that if, so Steve talks about the weed money, right? So, instead of all that, all that marijuana money went into the general fund. So, then they disperse it however they want.
Yes.
But who knows where that money is going? It's not very transparent. But if all that marijuana money went straight into an account specific for education here in Nevada, then taxpayers and voters could see where that money actually went. But when it goes into this damn general fund, who knows what's happening with it?
This is why I think vouchers are important, and the money needs to follow the child, number one. And we do need to, we do need an investigation and clean up the mess.
Yeah.
Yes, so...
So, you believe in the transparency?
Absolutely, 100%. $5 billion, and we're 49. We're actually not even investing in our children. We're gambling, and the house always wins. CCSD is still winning, and our children, yes, it's, it's true. Our kids are 49th in the nation. They can't, they can't read, they can't do math, and suicides up. I, I, and now we're pepper spraying our children in high school? I, I, and now we're pepper spraying our children in high school.
Really?
Last, look at the last meeting, there was a student there complaining that we need to do, do better and stopping the, the fighting. And there's pepper, we're pepper spraying our children, we're teaching them sex, we're teaching them they're victims, and we're pepper spraying them. And then on top of all that, they sit in a classroom for six, seven hours, supposedly learning, hold on, supposedly learning. They're not going outside and playing, they're not having fun, and they're forty nine in the nation, sitting down, staring at a, at a board. At this point, why don't we just let them go outside and play, and they could still be happy and still be forty nine in the nation?
Good point.
I mean, right now they're depressed.
Right. Would you, would you get rid of the Clark County School Police and replace it with Metro?
Absolutely, we need our heroes, we need our heroes. A- as a little girl in South Central, they were my heroes more than one time.
So you'd get rid of the Clark County School Police?
I would not get rid of it, it sounds extreme. I do believe that Metro serves our community, and they should be involved.
Okay, um, how would you go about doing that? I mean, how would you go about policing schools, I mean?
I don't have a direct answer, however, I've been, I've been talking to new candidates that want police in the school system. So there should be meetings that we should be having, and setting those structures.
What about all these, I mean, we, we have every, it's like, you know what to say about definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over?
Same thing with nothing.
Expect the different result. So every school year, just prior to the school year, you turn on the news and they talk about all these teacher shortage.
Yes.
Teacher shortage, teacher shortage, teacher shortage. Now we hearing that not only there's a teacher shortage, but they're turning away qualified licensed teachers that want to be a part of the system. Wha- what's going on?
So I believe, for example, if we take New York, and a lot of the police officers are quitting, they're leaving the force, that's our good officers. And I, and I believe that's happening also in Clark County, since, since we're, our curriculum is trash. Good teachers don't wanna teach trash. And I believe when we raise the bar, and we have good cur- curriculum, good standards, our good teachers will return, because they're out there. They're out there, we just need to fix our schools.
What about the IEPs, Individual Education Program? Um, do, do you think that it's, it's, it's com- it, it's, it's, it's on the, the same level as a student? It's actually working for kids that have difficulty, whatever they're?
It's case by case basis, and I could tell you that by experience, my son is deaf from one ear, and it did help him. But we also have to listen to the student, also what they feel comfortable, you don't wanna pull out a child and make them feel like there's something wrong with you, yes. So it has to do with the parents, case by case, the student, and I could tell you that by experience.
And how about sports?
Oh, sports, we need them back, sports, music, art, we definitely need it back.
Okay, and how are you planning on doing all that?
Again, like for example, I said in late in the, late nineties, we had the roadmap, when we did have music in the classrooms, we had sports in the classrooms. Let's follow that guideline and work from there.
Do, do you think because of the school board, going back a few, and, and currently have been violating the um, the open meeting law, um, do you think that, that, that the school board trustee should get a class on the open meeting law?
I understand.
Before they go up and sit there and, and, and get a class maybe on the constitution as well?
Oh, that would be, that would be great. However, I, I, my understanding is when you are first elected, the first sessions are to educate you on how the procedure works. Um, and then, for example, on the constitution and Bill of Rights, we should be doing that every year, every year. And not just with our trustees, but every child should learn their rights, because right now, what they don't know, they don't know.
They say what they don't know won't hurt them, right?
It does. Yeah, who came up with that?
Jimmy, have anything else on Ms. Neely?
No, other than uh, I just thank you very much for coming in. And uh, thank you very much for uh running for school board trustee, I don't have the guts to do it myself. I know it's not the easiest thing to do, and um, hopefully, when you do get elected, you'll be able to calm the demeanor down a little bit, and uh, get people to start working together again.
I have another one.
If that's possible.
So when, when, when people show up to go to speak at a school board meeting, and, and they don't get to speak, that's, that's a problem.
That is a problem.
Yeah.
So if I'm elected, I will be serving the people.
Have you spoken to any other former school board trustees as to get their, you know, pick their brain a little bit?
I am in the works of talking to teachers that formerly were teaching, and I think uh they have a lot to say and a lot to learn from. Yes.
Did we, did we cover everything you wanna get out?
Um, I believe so, yes. Can I just say, you guys are amazing, I've seen your show. Uh, like you said, I was a foster care license worker, uh, the breaking of the family is also a big problem. So thank you for bringing light to that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, Mark is gonna zoom in on you, and you, you tell the people that um, why you're, you know, why they should go to the voting booth and vote for you, and, and why any other candidates that wanna jump into your race, why they need to stay out of it? And your point of contact.
Thank you. So my name is Erica Neely, I'm running for school board. Uh, if you are looking for information, vote ericaneely.com, and please come out on June fourteen and vote. Our kids need you, they need us, our education is failing them. So if you're not happy with the current system that's in place, you have a voice, you have a choice, it is June fourteen. So I look forward for your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neely.
Folks, that's uh Erica Neely, she's a candidate for Clark County School Board District, letter F. You know, educate yourself, find out about her, you have a website?
Yeah, vote ericaneely.com.
There you go. This is Steve Sasso, Jim Jonas, until next week.